Decorating every room with a different theme? Whatever it is, here's one way to make those traditions extra special. Start the season with Etsy. On Etsy, you'll discover original pieces from small shops to help you celebrate your way. Shop Etsy for holiday decor that makes you feel seen. Special starts on Etsy.
All right, you ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Fairmont Heights Town Meeting for October 15th, 2025. It is officially 7:30. I'd like to call this thing into order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Again, I'm just going to briefly go over the meeting rules during citizens' participation, public comment. Remember, you only have three minutes. That's the gist of the meeting rules. All right, so council, are there any amendments to the agenda?
I'm not so sure about that. Last meeting I had an amendment made during the talk session, and however, I didn't see that reflected in the talk meeting. Why was that?
I'm sorry. Did we not discuss it when you made it? So when you make an amendment to the agenda, like if you want to add something?
During the tongue session?
Right.
It wasn't reflected during the talk meeting. So it's like I have to make the same amendment during the talk meeting?
Okay, no. So if you do make an amendment to the agenda, was it when you was talking about public safety? Was it that statement?
No, it was pretty much regarding the incentives for...
Public safety?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. The chief said he was going to talk to you offline on what your ideas were, and then once you get everything together, then you can put it back on the agenda and present it to the council.
But I think it was an amendment that was made, and it should have been reflected in the talk meeting. So I'm not sure.
It wasn't reflected in the meeting minutes? Where wasn't it reflected?
In the tongue meeting. So we just completely forgot about it?
No.
I just have to wait until I speak to the chief.
Well, okay, so when you make an amendment, and because it was not, you didn't have enough information about the program or the, whatever you were discussing, I thought you and chief were going to get together and then come up with a plan on, then you was going to present it to the council with all of your documentation.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, so are there any changes or amendments to the agenda? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Stewart?
Present.
Vice Chairman St. John?
Present.
Councilmember Waiters?
Present.
Councilmember Oscar?
Present.
Councilmember Yanni?
I haven't heard anything, so she didn't send an email. She'll be late. All right, so back to the amendment to the agenda. Are there any, I mean, at the adoption of the agenda, are there any amendments to the agenda?
I guess that's... Did you want to add it back to the agenda today?
Okay, so then, I'm going to, I have an amendment. I'm going to remove "I" until we get, until I talk to our treasurer and get more information. That was the textly communication engagement.
Right.
I did get the council's consent or consensus to move forward with that, so I'm going to make sure we have all information and present it to you at work session, next month's work session. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? All right, I'll accept the motion to approve this agenda as it is.
Okay, I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
Can I get a second? A second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, council. All right, approval of minutes. Madam Clerk should have sent everybody, sent everybody the meeting minutes for June 10th work session, June 18th town meeting, June 27th special meeting, June 8th work session, July 16th town meeting, September 9th work session, and September 17th town meeting. Did the council have an opportunity to review all of those meeting minutes? What was that last date? September 17th.
Yeah, okay. Yes, I had those. Yep.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
I vote that we approve the meeting minutes for, do I got to say all those things?
I vote we approve the meeting minutes that you just mentioned. Okay. Can I get a second?
Waiters.
Waiters for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Presentation, so we have Cal Reader here. He's going to present us with our proclamation from the 20743 Coalition. Please come up. Can we zoom in on it?
Good evening, mayor, council members, community members of Fairmont Heights. It is an honor to be with you all here tonight on behalf of the 20743 Coalition and the Joint Planning Committee. This framed proclamation is more than a ceremonial gesture. It's a symbol of commitment, unity, and vision. Signed by the mayors of the Town of Capitol Heights, the City of C Plus, and of course, the Town of Fairmont Heights, this proclamation represents the official launch of the 20743 Coalition and the shared belief that we are stronger together. With this proclamation, we celebrate a first-of-its-kind partnership between our municipalities, one rooted in equity, collaboration, and community voice. This signed copy is presented to the Town of Fairmont Heights as a reminder that your leadership helped make this moment possible and that your ongoing support will shape what comes next. Thank you again for your continued partnership, and we look forward to building this vision together. And so, on behalf of the 20743 Coalition, just wanted to present you guys.
Close up this play.
Y'all want to get us in front of the plate?
Yeah.
The whole council, come on. This was a joint effort. The whole council, come on. I can't see you, Ms. Waiters.
See who?
I can't see you.
Me?
Let me see.
Come right here.
Can we move that chair?
Check my shirt.
You want to check the shirt in?
I'm gonna check my shirt. It's my half of the workload.
I can do it the wrong way. Okay, all right. I wasn't sure if you want me to do it that way or not. That's much better.
That's good. One more.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're going to find a nice place to hang this, but yes.
Special shout out to Councilmember St. John for the decorations, y'all hosting, and all the good things. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Cal. We're going to go forward to working with the 20743 Coalition. All right. Is Goodr here?
No, not yet. But she called to confirm. She said she would be here. Alex, Alexis calling, and Mr. Green. They will be here.
We'll come back to that. Okay. All right, so the next agenda item is the legislation, the University of Maryland resolution. Mr. Remy, can you read this resolution to record, please?
Good evening, everyone. Audience, council members. Resolution, Town of Fairmont Heights, Resolution 30-25. A resolution to enter into an agreement with the University of Maryland for the revision of the Town of Fairmont Heights Code of Ordinance introduced by Mayor Stewart, whereas the Code of Ordinance for the Town of Fairmont Heights, the code, was last updated and adopted in 1988, and whereas the town attorney has informed the town that the 1988 code is outdated and no longer enforceable, and whereas the town has determined that it is both necessary and timely to revise the code, whereas the University of Maryland Institute of Government Services and Research, IGSR, has agreed to assist in rewriting the code, and whereas the mayor and council recognize the value of services produced by IGSR. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Town of Fairmont Heights that the town will support and actively participate in the revision of the Code of Ordinance, the town will encourage citizen input and participation throughout the process, this agreement will be formally adopted by the council in their October 2025 meeting. Approval on this day of, today's, the 15th of October 2025.
So, did she call the roll, or do I call? I mean, you have to read all of that.
Oh, okay, okay. So now we're going to call the roll. Mayor Stewart?
Aye. Okay. Oh, wait a minute. She doesn't do that part?
No, no, no. You just have to read the resolution into record. Just read it in.
Just read it in. The resolution.
You have to finish reading.
Name's on there.
You read the name.
Read the name.
Oh, okay, read the name. Okay, Mayor Stewart, Councilmember P. Waiters, Councilmember Gilmore Oscar, Councilmember St. John, and Councilmember Estelle.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, ma'am.
All right, while that's going on, going down the line to be signed. Thank you, ma'am. We do have another one here, council, and this is for the agreement, but it does not have a number associated with it.
Because I'm thinking that we assign the agreement, maybe I did it wrong, and you assign the number?
Yeah, it gets assigned the number. All right. Mayor Stewart, the resolution number for that one, what's that resolution number? Does it say FHR or just?
This one, this one's 3-25.
So what happened to the FHR?
What happens to FHR on any of the resolutions this year?
So the resolutions, I believe, should be FHR, and the ordinances are FHO, I thought. Okay, we can take it at the end for later. So you can go to the far next. Okay, yes. Understood. We'll come back to this one because I'm not quite sure if we have a number associated with this. All right, is that?
Let me introduce Mrs. Alex, representing Councilmember Stella Adams, Stafford's office, and her associates. Welcome to Town of Fairmont Heights.
Thank you, thank you.
And so we have you on the agenda, so I was hoping Mr. Green would be here at the same time, so.
He's not here yet?
He's not here.
Is he coming?
He confirmed that he would be here.
Okay, so we want to hold off until you tell Mr. Green he's here.
All right. Let me grab my phone and give him a call.
Okay. All right, so until Mr. Green arrives, we'll go down the agenda. Police Department, Ms. Chief Washington?
Good evening, mayor, council, residents, visitors. And I have your monthly report, September 1st through September 30th. Before I give out the numbers, I just want to start off. I got some emails this month, or last month, about just general safety with things that are going on and being so close to the DC line. So people, you know, had some concerns about, you know, just general safety tips. So let's start off with to stay safe in the Washington metropolitan area. Be aware of your surroundings, especially in crowded places and at night, and avoid leaving valuables visible in your car. Stick to well-lit populated areas. Trust your instincts and avoid walking alone late at night. When using public transportation, keep valuables out of sight and be aware of your fellow passengers. For residential safety, install strong locks and security features on doors and windows. Your personal safety, be aware of your surroundings. Put away your phone and headphones and stay alert to who is around you. A lot of people like to walk and talk and text and then not paying attention to their surroundings. So stay with the group. Avoid traveling alone late at night or in unfamiliar, unlit areas. You trust your instincts. If you feel unsafe or are being followed, move quick, move quickly to the nearest well-lit and populated building or cross the street. Do not accept rides or gifts from strangers. Never accept rides from strangers and be cautious of packages offered by people that you don't know. What we're seeing is that, you know, someone tries to give you something, it could be laced with a chemical, something that can make you pass out. So, you know, be mindful of that. Just don't accept it. It may seem as if you're being rude or something, but it might save your life. So plan ahead. Have a plan for where you're going and how you're going to get there, and share your travel plans with friends and family. Let people know. Share your location, you know.
Can you reiterate that to my sons?
I sure will. But yeah, sharing your location, a lot of people, you know, especially like with the mayor and the son, you know, kids don't, I don't want mom to know where I am or what I'm doing or who I'm hanging out with, and especially after she told me to, you know, not hang out in this particular area. But the smart thing to do is share your travel plans, you know. Let somebody at least know, because if something does happen to you, at least we know your last location, or we at least know where we need to start looking. So.
What about getting gas?
Well, getting gas, recommendation from Police Department, you always want to try to gas up your vehicle in daylight, okay? You want to do it at, you know, not a dark, gloomy gas station, but something that is well-lit, you know, and just try to pick your times during the day, you know, when you're going to go and actually get gas, especially if you are by yourself, if you are a female, I mean, even a male, by themselves or whatever. And everybody is vulnerable when it comes to things like that. So moving into some numbers, we'll go through this list this month because people just need to know. So we had a total of five 911 disconnects, one accident, one fight, five animal complaints, one armed person, two assaults, one assault report, two reports of gunshots, assist, one assist of fire and EMS, one attempt suicide, one break-in report. We had two check the welfares, one breaking in progress call for service, one child custody dispute. It was assist medical CPR, combined assist and fire board, nine disorderly calls, three family disputes, five expertises, and some of you all that don't know what an expertise is, it's your traditional stay-away orders, protective orders, things of that nature. I think we got a duplicate there with the gunshots. But one hit and run, one residential alarm, one found person, and that usually comes for those of you that don't know. But, uh, one hit and run, one residential alarm, one found, uh, person, um, and that usually comes for those of you that don't know. Uh, complaint, one, uh, traffic complaint that had something to do with, uh, somebody racing up and down the street. Two suspicious person calls, citizens called, advised, uh, and, and I always say this, you're not bothering nine-one-one from our Heights Police Department. You see something suspicious, say something. Call, we don't care. We want to make sure that everything's okay. If it turns out to be nothing, there's nothing. Uh, no thefts from auto this month. Um, one theft, which was a juvenile offense, uh, theft report, one trespassing complaint, seven traffic stops, four calls for service for unknown trouble, three vandalism's, another residential alarm, I believe that was a dup- duplicate, my apologies if it was, one threat complaint, eight noise complaints, and one subject stop. There was paper service, um, associated with a part, uh, expertise by the sheriff's office, were five of those, and one overdose. Total calls for the month that were dispatched were one hundred and twenty-nine. Total calls for service, FHPD responded to eighty-three. Um, also, out of those, uh, one twenty-nine, eighty-three of those calls were responded to by, uh, Falmouth Heights Police Department. The total stop sign camera violations issued in the last month were four hundred and twenty-eight. I'm hoping to see the number decrease. It is a new system that is in place, and it's not a, it's not a money-making machine. However, the goal of this is to try to get people to stop running stop signs. So you'll probably see a few more issues, um, and the number may actually go up before it goes down. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Um, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Um, oh, I was going to say.
Councilman St. John.
Um, so Chief, so to your point, um, combining, uh, what we spoke about the gas station and then people handling packages, I did just want to quickly share a story. Um, a girlfriend of mine, two weeks ago, was at a gas station. Um, and her first red flag was that the gentleman had gloves on. Um, so he was trying to engage in her. He was, she said he was charming and everything, kept trying to give her his, give her his phone number. And he was trying to give her a piece of paper, and her first instinct, like, it's twenty, people use cell phones, like, why are you trying to hand me a piece of paper? Um, and she went on and proceeded to, um, get in her car, but she was with somebody when they were coming out. They saw him take the paper and put it like into a plastic bag when he was done getting back into his car. So definitely can happen to anybody, you know?
It definitely can, and the council member, she's, you know, people, people, the, the, the one thing that should alert you to that, the person had gloves on, you know, it's not even cold enough for gloves. But you're, have gloves on and you're trying to give someone a piece of paper. Um, yes, they are lacing paper. If you see, if you see a hundred dollar bill on your windshield, don't touch it. Don't. Nine times out of ten, it has some type of chemical, something, some chloro, some, something that's going to, uh, absorb into your skin, uh, um, quickly and cause you to, uh, pass out or whatever. And the next thing you know, you're gonna wake up someplace that, you know, you don't know, you could be in another country. But it is very important, and she's exactly right, you have to be aware of your surroundings. And, you know, a lot of us are nice people, don't be rude to people, but hey, this is, you know, could be a matter of life and death, so just don't do it.
Don't touch the hundred dollar bill. Or the twenty.
Just ask the mayor for it, she got it.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Um, is Mr. Pinkney not here this evening?
Um, I didn't receive a call from.
Is he online? Oh, he's online virtually? Oh, I'm excited. Okay, so we'll come back to him once we find out what his status is. Chief, can you find out where he is? Uh, Public Works, Mr. Cradle?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My monthly report for October is pretty brief, um. So we're gonna, uh, cover a few key maintenance and service updates completed and scheduled by the Public Works Department. Um, ma'am, Cradle, can you pull up those pictures, alley pictures? So we had, uh, we did alley, uh, lighting installation at the beginning of October. Public Works staff installed LED motion detector lights.
Can you pick up a little louder?
Yeah. Completed alley, that's my lead. Anyway, um, a light post would be, uh, installed in the Aspen Street alley to complete the lighting project in that area. Pictures, no?
We don't have them.
No, don't have them.
She said, we do. It's loaded, we do.
Well, I will say, um, the one right there on Asp- is that Aspen?
That's, that's between Veteran Memorial and the Lodge.
Okay.
So we have like two or three lights in every alley. Um, they light up when pedestrians walk, walk through, if they walk through.
Okay.
Uh, the residents feel a little safer with that going on, so, um, we put them in all the alleys to, to, you know, help, help the town out. So at the beginning of October, Public Works staff installed LED, oh, I'm sorry, sidewalk repairs. Starting in early November, the concrete vendor will begin repairing damaged sidewalks throughout the town. During this time, Public Works staff will also address minor cliff damage by grinding down uneven sections to improve pedestrians', uh, safety. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna grind down the sidewalks. That's trip hazards, that's like this. You can take a grinder and grind it down, that'll smooth it out. So, um, if, um, someone's walking up the alley, up, up the sidewalk, they won't trip. Uh, what's next? Um, bulk trash collection. So bulk trash is Tuesday, October the twenty-second. Um, residents are reminded to place bulk items at the curb for pickup, please limit items to no more than five per household. Um, which, that is what, two weeks from now? That's on, that's on Wednesday. And last but not least, okay, leaf, leaf season preparation. So Pu- Public Works will begin, uh, preparing, uh, equipment and staffing for the upcoming leaf collection season in November. And that pretty much concludes my report.
I will say I rode past on Aspen Street and saw the alley. I was like, I've been living, because I own a property right there. I've been living in this town, a part of this town, for fifty-four years. That's the first time I've seen.
You see straight through.
Straight through the alleyways. So, great job, Public Works. I was like, I stopped and backed up, looked again, I was like, wow, this looks really good. So thank you, Public Works, for that. Did anybody have any questions for, uh, Mr. Cradle? All right, Town Manager, Mr. Rumi? Oh, um, I'll call you back.
Okay, yeah, he, I can give it for him if Ms. Russell pulls it up for me.
Okay.
He's, um, can.
Good evening, again, everyone, um, to everyone in our audience, those who are online. Uh, this is my report for the period ending September thirtieth. I, I'm gonna skip a lot and go to the most important things because we have some great important things that happened during this month. Economic, the Green Team, the Green Team met on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five at six P.M. I want to thank Mr. Kyle Reader, who, uh, was co-host of the meeting, great meeting. The meeting was attended by Stephanie Prostel, Executive Director of HIP, Sherry Brightmore, PG County Arts Council, um, Falmouth Heights Council Member Patricia Wiss, thank you for attending, uh, Wesley Hickson of the PG County Arts Council, Renita Flood, President of Falmouth Heights CDC, and Chef Warren Eccleston, who is a citizen, and a member of the Falmouth Heights Green Team, and of course myself. Uh, Mrs. Prostel summarized the design of the Net Zero Housing Park, and Mrs. Flood stated that she would like to explore other art spaces within the town. And she used the K Street Market Circle as an example, and I think that's a great thing, uh, when we talk about beautification of the historic Town of Falmouth Heights. Uh, the Net Zero update, uh, during the month of September, HIP completed the following. They obtained full solar panel installation permits and will work on securing the remaining during the month of September. Um, the mural, the Art and Humanities, uh, Commission issued a RFQ, which is a request for qualification for local artists to create a mural on the fence at the Net Zero Housing, uh, Pocket Park. Uh, resumes were due by September fifteen. The Art Council received twelve responses to the RFQ. And not included in this report, I'm gonna add live, there will be a site visit on tomorrow. Will you be here, Ms. Scott?
Well, I might not be able to.
Okay, okay, there's a site visit tomorrow from twelve to one P.M. to meet the final artist, uh, who selected to create the mural, and I will be getting back to you, uh, probably at our, uh, pre-work session and, um, bring in any work, and at some point, uh, during, uh, the month of November, you will get to meet the artist selected. Great day on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, Secretary Jake Day of the Maryland Department of Housing visited the Net Zero Housing Development. Uh, uh, he, uh, pre- to present, uh, to receive the guest was Stephanie Prostel, Executive Director of HIP and the HIP staff. Many officials from Prince George's County Department of Housing, other elected officials were in attendance. Mayor Stewart, thank you for your welcome. Uh, she welcomed the secretary and his guest to the Town of Falmouth Heights. The part, the department then issued a press release that very day announcing his visit to historic Falmouth Heights, and I was excited about that. Uh, the Prince George's County Climate Stewart Academy, I was selected by the University of Maryland Sustainable Community to participate in the academy. Uh, classes, classes started on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at the University of Maryland campus. Uh, I do have a copy of the syllabus that I'll copy. That I will copy and pass to the council. Um, so, uh, the, the second class was, uh, was held on September thirtieth. Each participant in the project, I, I did, uh, contact and, and had a meeting with Mr. Cradle, and, uh, right now we selected food waste and leaf comp- composting. So, uh, I, I will bring you more in terms of that project as we do along. And at the end of the session, we must present our project to the university and then to the Town of Falmouth Heights. Um, also, the next thing is plans for the Good R Store, and I do have Representative Mrs. Allison Cohen here today. Uh, the Good R Store is a, a chain of nonprofit stores to serve underserved communities considered a food desert and absent of quality, healthy food. Uh, Mr. Pinkney and I have visited several possible locations with Mrs. Cohen. Uh, she's the special project manager of the Office of County Councilmember Sheila, am I pronouncing her name right?
Sheila.
Sheila Adams Stafford, and we are, we have narrowed it down to, uh, one location, uh, which, uh, Mrs. Cohen will, uh, bring her information to you, uh, in a few minutes in this meeting. Uh, also, the Chesapeake Bay Trust, uh, I have modified the budget worksheet reflecting, uh, the thirty thousand dollar award that we submitted. And so we're well on our way down to draw down that money. And, um, although Mr. Kyle came with his nicely framed award, I have an award that I would like to present to the mayor and council as well. It will be framed. Uh, and this is the Prince George's County Beautification and Sustainability Award, in acknowledgement of the accomplishment in county beautification and sustainability, the Falmouth Heights Cooling Grove Year One. Not only have we received award, uh, I was saying to, uh, Kyle that, uh, the University of Maryland classes are so easy for me because they're using Falmouth Heights as a model, and this is an example we use as a model for the Cooling Grove for our arts projects, so it makes it easier for me. So, uh, Mayor Council, I would like to present to you my unframed. Everybody, yeah.
I can take a picture for y'all. That's my picture, go on, you look this way real quick, second. Okay.
We, we, uh, come on. Yes, come on, y'all. We gotta have some pictures on the.
Not only that, this is a lot of work by Public Works and others.
Come on, Public Works. Yeah, come on. Y'all did this. Uh, are we gonna move in front of the symbol, I mean, the, uh, steel?
I have. Oh, you want to be centered, sure.
A little bit.
Thanks.
Okay, I got you, I got you. You want me?
Alright, yeah.
You want me? You, you want me? Okay. I got you, I got you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, be careful, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Please get that framed.
I will. Okay, um, that's almost, uh, oh. Uh, again, I want to bring up the, the Patriot STEM Organization. They're having some wonderful, wonderful project, uh, programs for youth, and they have programs for grandmothers. Um, I will no longer be considered deprived of technical skills because they created a class for me.
Okay.
And so Mrs. uh, Mrs. Hart said she would like to attend the class as well. So we will learn all the new tech, uh, technology and skills, especially in creating, uh, reports. And that, it concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rumi. Does any council members have questions on the table? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Want me to wait?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Chief do Mr. Pinkney's report, and then I'll call you up, Ms. Walker.
Okay. Public Works?
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, Code Enforcement. I looked right at Mr. Cradle for Public Works.
Yeah, Mr. Pinkney had an emergency and could not be with us, so I'm helping out. Code enforcement report, um. So citations, uh, we had one resident paid a citation, uh, person, uh, totaling two fifty on September nineteenth. Uh, September twenty-fourth, uh, the District Court of Maryland awarded the town, uh, I'm sorry, two thousand five hundred dollars for various code violations. Building permits, for this period, uh, the town, we issued five, uh, building permits, uh, totaling one thousand five hundred two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Business licenses for this period, uh, two business licenses were issued, uh, with a total of fourteen hundred and sixty dollars. Rental licenses for this period, um, totaling, I don't think.
It's supposed to be zero.
Uh, zero, okay. Zero on that, and vacant builder registration fees for this period, we haven't received any. Bacon lot registration, none of those either. Uh, stop work orders, uh, notice of corrective action, um, Code Enforcement issued sixteen door hangers and corrective actions for notices for various code violations on Wednesday, October eighth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Mr. Pinkney met with, uh, senior commercial agent representing a commercial property. I'm sorry, ma'am, I, you get my.
She can zoom in for you, Chief.
Huh, and she can zoom, oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, where am I? Alright, so, Wednesday, yup, October eighth. So, uh, Mr. Pinkney met with the senior commercial agent representing the commercial property in the town used for the Good R Store. Um, we also, uh, accompanied by special projects managers representing the Good, Good R Store, Mr. Rumi and special project manager representing the Good R Store. And Mr. Pinkney visited the site on October seventh, uh, of this year. The site that we looked at was Suite A five on the first floor. Uh, when you entered the building, which they all considered was a great location. So when the special project manager, uh, represent, representing the Good R Store visited the site on October eighth, the senior commercial agent representing the commercial property in the town showed, uh, showed the, um, them a different suite, uh, located at the rear of the building after they met, uh, with another property owner, the other proposed, proposed site for the Good R Store. Is that, did he have anything else? Well, it sounds like the Good R Store is a good thing.
It is, it are, right? Okay, thank you, Chief, for presenting his report.
No, no problem. For a different format.
Our treasurer, Mrs. Walker?
Good evening, everyone.
You can say good evening for me.
Alrighty, good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens, visitors, and staff. My name is Susan Walker, I'm the treasurer for the Town of Falmouth Heights. I'll be presenting a summary as of the end of September. So we are three months into the year, and normally I would give you a very detailed report, but since I did not do that at the work session, I'm gonna give you a summary. I just want to say overall, the summer months are usually our hard time because we don't have a lot coming in. So when the fall, coming in means we don't have a lot, I mean, we have a lot of revenue coming in during that time. When the fall hits, we're already busy, and that's when we start getting a lot of our, um, property tax money. So we have received, um, as Ms. Russell's pulling the report up, we have revenue from four different areas. Our general revenue, which includes revenue from our property taxes, our business taxes, business licenses, and vacant properties and vacant dwellings. And so for general revenue, we received two hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundreds, two hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty cents. So that is thirty-six percent. So that is 36% of what we budgeted. And as you can see, we've seen intergovernment transfers, that's money from other agencies, That's 23% of what we budgeted. And for other revenue, which comes in from everything else, trash pickup, building hall rentals, cable and franchise fees, code violations, we've received $29,795.78. That's 43% of what we budgeted. That area is much higher than what we thought we were gonna get. And mainly that's because a lot of the code violations that Mr. Pinkney have written in previous years, that money is starting to come in. So when he does a violation, some of those violations, we don't get paid for right away. Some of the time, a lot of times it's put as a property lien. And so when the property sells, then we'll get that money. But overall, and I will say, even though the police department, the revenue from that department right now is low in comparison to how it's been, I will say that based upon where we are with the police department, because everyone knows we're rebuilding our police department, we're growing our police department. And so I've been probably in Chief Washington's ear a little bit more than he would like, but just keep reminding him that we want him to build a good department. So we need him to take his time and get the best officers that he can. He's been doing a wonderful job with Officer Collin, training him. We see the reports coming in, we see the violations that he's writing, everything. He's getting a lot of good training. So it's not always about the numbers on this side, it's about where we going. And so I just want to commend him. I know I put a lot of pressure on him a lot of times, but I think he's doing a really good job. And again, he's building it at a pace that I think will be able to sustain our department. Because that's what we want to do, we want to have a department that we can sustain. We don't want people to come and go, we want people to be here. And so though the number may look low compared to the other departments, again, I say, he's building it the way that I think will sustain it. And then what we do not see here, because it hasn't happened yet, we just put the cameras up, you will eventually see the revenue that's coming in from the stop sign cameras. We know that revenue will be higher at some point and it'll drop off. But the goal is safety. So when the numbers drop, we hope that people's behaviors have changed. Because that's what we want, is we want the safety throughout the town. So overall, we have received $368,713.42. That's 30% of our budget. So we are a little higher than where we are. So we're 25% of the year in, we have income at 30%. So I like to see us a little higher than where we are in the year because that means that we're, we'll be able to continue to operate and get through the year. On the expense side, I won't go through as much detail. I'll just say that administration, there is not a lot that I want to highlight in that area because this is just the first quarter. But our expenses for that department have been right at 25%. Legislative, which is the mayor and council, their department is at 20%. Not a lot of activity going on right now. Some people may remember, we made a switch this year and we are more program focused than event focused. But we know that programs have events. So we're gonna still have events, but we're looking at a holistic approach. So we're looking at, I'm not going to steal Miss Waiters' thunder, but we have the senior program, we have a youth program, we have, we're trying to get all citizens, something for every citizen. So we're looking at a more holistic approach. So we'll have, we will have events, but we want programs that everyone can take advantage of and we can sustain those programs throughout the year. So that, again, that department is a little under where we are, they're at 20%. Municipal, that covers everything that covers this building. So our utilities, our maintenance, our repairs. And so that is at 32%. So a little bit higher than where we are in the year, but we have not overspent in any areas. Just because the percentage is higher doesn't mean that we've overspent.
Public. Pepco bill.
Yeah, we have had some pretty large Pepco bills. Public safety, 16%, and public works, 22%. So overall, our spending has only been 21% of our budgeted income, budgeted expenses. So I do like, I do like where we are. We are doing a good job of maintaining, maintaining our expenses at a rate that will allow us to get through the year. Mr. Cradle highlighted us on some upcoming repairs that we're going to have. And he mentioned the sidewalks. We're also doing roadway repairs. So Mr. Pinkney, Mr., did I say Mr. Pinkney or Mr. Cradle? I said Pinkney, Mr. Cradle. He's on a tremendous job, thank you, Mr. Cradle, of going out with the vendor and walking the entire town. So we do have all the locations, Mayor, we have identified all the locations. We will give you a full list of the locations. As far as the speed humps, we're gonna do them at the same time. I thought it was gonna be afterwards, but the vendor said, no, we'll do it the same time. So he'll do repairs. If there's a repair on that road, he'll do that repair at that time and then he'll follow speed up. So we'll be ensuring that the speed humps are installed. The roads are repaired before the speed humps are installed. So our goal is to get this done by the end of November. We're pushing to get these speed humps in by the end of November. If you, if you remember, we put speed humps in, we have three phases. We're in phase two now. We do have a lot of speeding in the town and we are trying our hardest to have a better, a safer area. So we're trying everything that we can. So these speed humps should help in the areas where we're seeing excessive speeding. But the last thing I will say about that is, Mayor, the final, the final decision will be, based upon what Chief Washington says, we'll give them the information that we have. And if their numbers show anything different, we told the vendor, then we may have to switch. If he says, this street is a little bit worse than this street, then we may make that switch and push one street to phase, phase three. Okay?
Okay.
And thank you, I want to say thank you to Mr. Cradle and the Public Works Department. We do have a garbage disposal for downstairs, Mayor. I know you have been waiting for this. Certain who knows, we are back to renting our building hall space and we've made some beautiful upgrades to the building hall area. And one of the things we know that when people rent, they're gonna have food, they're gonna try to put the food down the sinks. We had, we're gonna install a garbage disposal. And we did get a discount on an ice machine. Unfortunately, we can't put it in the basics, we have to put a drain down there. So it's up here for now. Okay. And eventually, when we can put some money towards that, then we have to dig a drain because you have to have a drain pipe down there.
Full drain.
Yeah, and we don't have a, we just don't have, we can't allocate money right now for that. Okay. But eventually, this drain up here is already here. So we'll put it up here and we'll eventually move it to the basement once we're able to reallocate some money for that. Okay? And those many things I wanted to highlight.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Before you leave, any questions on the council?
Not until, what is this? I see my name being spelled, C, C?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You still want us to talk about that? We got all your.
Just briefly mention it because I'm just.
Okay, so we have concluded our department's reports.
Oh, is Mr. Green here yet?
Mr. Green is not coming. Yeah, so Colin can adequately address the Good R Store.
Yes. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
I didn't expect to know. Hello, everyone. My name is Alexis Cohen and I'm the special projects manager for County Councilmember Shayla Adams Stafford, who covers District Five. And one of the council members' priorities is to improve the health and wellness of District Five residents. And one way we want to do that is by improving the food environment. So we are partnering with an organization called Gooder. They're based in Atlanta, Georgia, and they are a hunger solutions and waste solutions organization. And one of their activations are like small scale grocery stores. And the way those grocery stores are set up, they need about 200 to 300 square feet to really like retrofit a space for like a small grocery setup. So they're putting in shelves, they're putting in refrigerators. And they're able, through that model, to service between 200 to 250 families on a weekly basis with a free bag of groceries. So we are really excited that we're making great leaps and efforts toward that endeavor. I want to give a big thank you to Ms. Doris Arumi for helping me as well as Mr. Pinkney for showing locations in the area because we wanted to do it in Fairmont Heights, knowing, one, that this is a historic place and also a place that has been impacted by food insecurity. So we want it to plant here and we'd like to say like feed Fairmont Heights. So we are launching in January. We're likely to go with the Addison Road location. We just gotta work out some kinks likely because we'll share the space with you all since it's larger than what we need. But we're on track to do it. The council member has dedicated $200,000 in her budget to it. We'll likely need a few more dollars though for the rent, so we'll figure that part out. But we got most of what we need to make this thing happen and we will be sending out communications via our newsletter with how we'll select those 200 to 250 families. But we're really excited about this. Gooder is also like really committed to supporting local farmers and suppliers and things in the area. So we will definitely be pushing forward folks that we know like farms here. If you all have any local suggestions, feel free to share with Ms. Arumi or myself. I can give my email. But yeah, that's, that's what I have about the store.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And my Public Works is really good at growing stuff.
Okay.
Public Works. I'll be calling you.
Tomatoes.
We can use a few of those.
Did we have any questions for Ms. Cohen?
Yep. So if you can just share, like especially for our residents online, just kind of how the program has worked in the past as far as how the residents would sign up and how often they can shop.
Yes, yes. So we are new to this system as well because this is our first time working with Gooder. But basically, there will be an application that we will send out from that, we'll probably send it out in November, if I'm honest, it isn't ready yet. But it'll go out in November and we'll select families probably at the end of the year since the store won't open until January. And we want to get a wide range of folks that we're supporting. So students that are at the high school, we want to support some seniors for sure. Want to support even the refugee community that has landed here in District Five broadly and some other populations that maybe don't get as much attention. So application process, the application will definitely have the criteria, but it'll also say, you submitting this application doesn't mean that you will be selected. We're likely gonna do a lottery system of sort to try to make it equitable, but that's our plan for now. And families will be able to shop weekly. So they'll receive like a, like a good kind of reusable sized bag that they'll get to fill. There is an outline that I'm not recalling, but I think it's maybe like a few proteins, a few veggies, a few shelf staples, like eggs, milk. Like they can get that on a weekly basis. Mm-hmm. Yep.
And it's, it's not based off of income, right?
It's not. Uh-uh, no.
So what criteria is that we talking about?
TBD. Mm-hmm. Yeah, we haven't created the application yet. But we will have some way to assess need in the application, but we don't know just yet. We might state in the description that, you know, if you're over a certain amount, then you can, but we haven't made that description just yet. We're open to suggestions if you want to make sure there's a cutoff.
One of the other things that I believe we'll need to factor in or something that you guys have in the works is how much groceries they can get at one time. As far as like, do you get, you know, X amount of meats or X amount of milk and things like that when they know what their cap is?
Yep, so they'll know that, that'll also be available in the store. So once we do select these people, we'll give them an overview of like, this is how the process works, this is how frequently you can come. And there will be folks in the store to kind of just like check them off, like X family came on this Tuesday, we can't see you again until next Tuesday or after. And in the store, it'll also have like what kind of your shopping list should we include?
And then my last question, are we accepting volunteers?
We are, we are. And we do already have a volunteer link, so that I can share with Ms. Arumi and then you can go ahead and start putting that out there. So yes. Mm-hmm.
Good, thank you. And you made me forget my question. Sorry. Oh, never mind. It's not gonna come back to me quick enough. Uh, no.
Sure.
But thank you, Ms. Cohen. Thank you for coming up and speaking to the council. We're looking forward to this program to launch and you have the full support of the town of Fairmont Heights.
Thank you so much, Mayor Stewart.
And please thank Councilwoman Shayla Adams. Thank her for thinking of us.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, so now we can go down to mayor and council reports. Madam Clerk, I sent you a copy of my report. I'm just gonna paraphrase. Okay, yeah. All right, I'm just gonna paraphrase mine, but if the, if Madam Clerk can pull my report up. It's been a busy month or so. All right, so in September, I did attend the, my councilwoman St. John and myself had a meeting with Stephanie Postel to discuss the ongoing Net Zero Project. And it focused on the future development. That was just a quick, a quick Zoom meeting that we had, but it was very informative. On September 20th, I participated in the walkthrough, as Ms. Arumi mentioned, with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development led by Secretary Jake Day. We welcomed his team. They were what, 30 deep, maybe? They, a lot came out, they really enjoyed the property. They toured both houses that were open for touring and nothing but good comments, positive feedback. On September 20th, I joined fellow mayor, municipal mayors for a community 5K walk. And it fostered regional relationships with District Heights and the wellness program. If you can scroll down and see my picture. I was really running in this picture, y'all.
Yes. And then stopped when it was on.
Yeah, that's the camera, they stomped us in the camera. I also won this, I got this 5K award for that. Hopefully the town can do something like that. On September 24th, I was invited to a commander's game with Lieutenant Governor Miller. Go ahead, scroll down, that's us. At the game. We had a really good time, the commanders won, so that was a good game. I attended the Black Mayors Meeting in September. September 25th, I also attended the Maryland National Capitol Parking Plan and Commission Open House, where they presented to a lot of the municipal governments about how they're gonna start partnering with us to make a better community. During the open session where we could ask questions, I raised the question about issuing, what do they call, permits to residents, building permits, and how they can notify us of these permits. Because what's happening is, and Mr. Pinkney will tell you, they'll get a permit from the county and don't know they have to come here and get a permit. And then they'll start their building or they'll build out, building their deck or whatever project they're doing. And then Mr. Pinkney has to put a stop work order on them because they didn't come here. So I asked them, is there a mechanism in place to notify the municipalities when people have been approved of permits? They said they don't have that in place, but they're gonna look into, try to refine that process a little bit for us. And also during that presentation, they had multiple questions on the board. And they asked like people to answer the questions, so I answered one of the questions correctly. You know, your mayor be out here. And I want all these nice little things. I don't know what else is in here, but I want all these little stuff. Anybody is welcome to have something out of here. But they asked about the art district and where was one of the art districts? And I yelled, oh, Highsville! And that was the correct answer. So it's good to know other things about other municipalities. Let me get going. Oh, on the September 27th, I also attended the Masonic Fairmont Heights Lodge 92. Excellent bowl. Keep scrolling, I want y'all to see this pretty picture. Where I was awarded, it was top hats and tierces. And I was awarded this certificate here for community partnership with the lodge. I really appreciate them for honoring me and I have committed to making sure that we continue to work with them on whatever can benefit the town moving forward. So I did receive that award. You have a good Fairmont Heights knowledge station. Yeah? And let's see. Oh, and then on October 11th, our own councilwoman Waiters. I didn't have any pictures, but Waiters probably has pictures, but.
You gotta remind me to send them.
Yeah, I attended her caring for seniors and persons with disability resource fair. It was, it wasn't a great turnout, but however, the people who did come got a lot of useful and beneficial information. And I also had a candid conversation with Senator Benson on some, some next steps for the town of Fairmont Heights. And she's given me some direction that I'm gonna be getting with my team with so that we can follow through on that. And I think that sums up my report. But again, your mayor is. And I think that sums up my report, but again, your mayor is out here trying to promote the town, trying to move us forward. I can't wait until we start this project. Thank you guys. Uh Councilwoman St. John?
Oh great. Um good evening to everyone in, in the crowd. I almost said a stand, oh Lord. Um in the crowd and online. Uh this is my report for the last thirty days. Um so not to beat the dead horse, but I did attend the ma, the meeting with um Stephanie as well as um also attended the uh Gooder meeting. Um on nine thirty, um I did also attend the showing of the Net Zero home, so I won't go into detail with those. Um on October eighth, I attended our JPC meeting where we were able to finalize and go through our final run-through of our bylaws um and going through the budget. Um on September the eleventh, we had a full two oh seven four three coalition where we were able to share that with the broader groups um of all three municipalities to go through, allow other council members, mayors to ask any questions that they may have. Um so that we can try to get things finalized and moved along. Um with that being said as well, um I'll also mention the, the meeting that we have upcoming a, a little bit later. Um on Sunday, October the nineteenth through the twenty-first, I attended the MML Fall Conference. Um this conference was definitely good this time around and I can't wait to share with you. They had a new class which was a charter checkup review um that teaches us um some of the steps to updating your town's charter, um what to look out for, um some of the usual processes to get it done. Um and kinda gave us like the tips of do's and, and do nots to go through that. Um I also attended um the effective meeting class um where I also will be presenting some new tips and things that we've learned to have a more effective meeting um to keep us on track from trailing off um and being able to still get things done, but not spending two to three hours to do so. But you've been doing great with getting us in, at a, at a decent time. Other projects that I'm still currently working on right now is the ninetieth anniversary. Um right now where we are, we have, or I have created um pretty much a timeline, kind of roadmap for where we are. Um I will be scheduling the next meeting um for next month where we can start to go ahead and look at all the things I've created, which includes um the sponsor letter, um some ideas for packages, for being able to do the, the sponsor tickets um at different levels. Um and just being able to delegate tasks and be able to help us all keep each other accountable and know what we're all working on. Also the back to school night will be, let me get that right here. Um our back to school movie night um which is not just limited to kids. I don't know if they can see that up here, um but we do have this online and for social media. Um this is gonna be Friday, October the twenty-fourth from five to eight P M. We'll be showing the movie. Um and we'll have snacks and there'll also be a raffle prize. Um you'll get your raffle tickets coming through the door. Also, as I just mentioned, working on getting finalized just with the bylaws and uh the, the budgeting, everything with the two oh seven four three coalition. Um also, one of the things coming out of the MML Conference, um I am working right now on getting us entered into the Banner City Program. Um we have already done like four of the five requirements that will consider us to be a banner city. Um so I was able to um just get some more detailed information. Um so I'll begin with you guys in the next work session to talk about how we can get that last piece. Um and lastly, I have our trunk or treat. Um this is Friday, October the thirtieth. Um this is thirty first, October thirty-first, no, I'm right. Uh six to nine P M. Um so I do wanna say we do have a lot of challenging um other municipalities and organizations kind of doing things on Fridays and Saturdays. Um so one of the things hopefully, Kyle, see you over there, that we can work on with our two oh seven four three coalition is being able to have one big event um where everyone can come out and have a greater turnout, um one resource for everyone to go to. Um but we will be ready to celebrate with our citizens for this event. Um and that will conclude my report.
Parents that are in the room, please allow your children to come. Grandchildren, please. We're gonna have a good time. We're gonna bring them back to your sugardough. You can thank us later for that. Make treats this time. We'll talk about it. We'll talk about it. Councilwoman Waiters?
Yes, good evening, everyone. To those on, online and in person. Several of um the initiatives or say the key points that were targeted for this event was, have been. I mentioned, I started off with saying that I did, as a small note, attend the selection of the artists for uh the mural then I'll move on into the event. Um and I wanna make correction, this was something that, the endeavor that was um implemented by the town of Fama Heights. It was um, and I'll go over the purpose, but it, this is something that we discussed in doing for the community wherein we are focused on. And we targeted seniors, uh but it was an awareness. Uh and my concern personally was um some of the things that I, my age, are not aware of that I can either apply for or that I qualify for, and one is as simple as a declutter, which I need. So um I wanted to say that, that this was an endeavor by the town of Fama Heights Mayor and Council to reach out to the community to bring resources together. So it was to, it was caring for seniors resource event. And it was organized to connect senior citizens, caregivers uh in the town of Fama Heights and beyond, local resources services and programs to support their well-being, independence and quality of life. Um at an overview, it was hosted at the library. And I, I wanted to thank uh branch manager Kiana Turpin, uh the attendees, actually, I counted thirty um with the vendors and all because it was a lot of pastors and people that came from upstairs. Uh special guests, Senator Benson, Delegate Tiffany Austin, former mayor William Martin, who um was the mistress of our ceremony. Mayor Akiva Stewart was there as well, gave um us an overview. Chief Washington, um who has a proposal for um an outreach. And other representatives, so many that we can't remember. So most of the people that were coming were people that were bringing information to share, um handouts, flyers and other information. And then providing onsite information. Participants were Pepco, um Meals on Wheels. It was mentioned earlier that um for passing out meals per week or what Meals on Wheels does that, and they were talking about that. Department of Social Services, Warm Embrace In-Home Support for Independent Living, Loving Support, Senior Companionship and Care Services. Um and the town of Fama Heights Event Coordination and Community Outreach Efforts. The impact and the outcomes will strengthen the relationships between seniors, caregivers and service providers. Increase awareness and availability um countywide and um town resources to enhance community participation and trust in local leadership. Provides opportunity on onsite enrollment and service uh signups. Promote movement and recreation activities as part of the healthy um aging. Um strengthen collaboration between the library and the community organizations. Lastly, and to conclude, out of this event came recommended uh future events. One, expanding recreation movements. Um someone was there from the Department of Recreation that wants us to now come to something that they're having to speak on what we've, we've already done. Um so um our next endeavor is to get up and move, uh to incorporate exercise, demonstrate dance and mobility. Host, I'm excited about this one, uh senior, annual senior prom for seniors. And what's special about this is we know that we have some people that can attend and we have some people that will attend virtually. And so we've accepted that as a challenge to present this as an event that both homebound as well as others can attend in person and or virtually. Increase the market outreach, use social media. We did do that, flyers, the robocalls, Madam Mayor, you mentioned that and you're working on that. Um including the church networks and include onsite health screening. That's another uh, another endeavor that they were working on. And to establish follow-up resources line as we put this information out and connect with these resources. We want to be able to do a follow-up and continue to report on the impact and the outcome. So it was a resounding success in promoting the connection and care of community, the partnerships formed and engaged. Achieved the highlight town's commitment to enhance the lives of its seniors and residents, building upon its momentum through future recreation-based and celeb, celebratory, I'm sorry, events such as the senior prom. Emphasis on that again. Will continue to uplift and empower our aging population. Thank you very much. Thank you for my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waiters. Councilwoman Oscar?
Alright, thank you. So we haven't sent out the flyers for the veteran day events. But I'm hoping to speak with the treasurer, Ms. Walker, um about us having the uh some type of activity downstairs in the hall. If it's possible, if it's not too late, um we can really discuss the possibility of still doing that for the veterans coming up. And if we can, we should, we should definitely um send out the flyers and see if we can um have them at least come out for some maybe tea, coffee and a small breakfast on the uh, on behalf of the town. In addition to that, uh I just wanna highlight the fact that uh there's a lot of talk about health and fitness and health and wellness. And um the parks and recreation also have um from ages thirteen and up. So I'd like to encourage some of the residents here to take advantage of um some of the activities that they have over at the park and restoration. That particular location is at Wat, Watkins Park where um they have activities such as um fitness in the park where, you know, sometimes it's expensive to join gyms and all of that, but the county has made those activities available for free. And um it involves cardio sessions, um strength training, resistance training. And um it, it takes place uh from five thirty to six thirty. So if you have time, it's Wat, Watkins Park, um feel free to attend some of those activities. It goes a long way. Health and fitness is pretty tan, a very integral part of, you know, your health. So take advantage of that. Other than that, um in addition to that, there's also art classes, visual art, performing arts. Um if you have free time, you can also take advantage of those things. And um that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Councilman Oscar. Okay, so that concludes the mayor and council reports. We're gonna move down the agenda under unfinished business. Um we've already taken care of the University of Maryland uh contract, so we can skip over that. The building hall agreement, uh Madam Clerk has sent everybody the revised copy. Please review it so we can um finalize this document and get it um ready for use by next month. I don't know why I keep taking my glasses off like I can see. Councilwoman Waiter, public safety signage for impaired citizens?
Yeah, I, I wanted to kinda keep tracking that because um we, we've talked about it a couple of times. But it is, um I think Ms. Walker, budget has a budget impact for install as well. As um I think it, it would be what it, resolution related.
It will be resolution and then.
Community outreach.
Yep. Where the sign should go, how many we need, what they should say.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we, can we put this on the agenda? You come up with some verbiage um and then work with Ms. Walker on, or Mr. Cradle could help you with the cost of the sign, how big they should be. Or you can delegate to Mr. Cradle to help with how big the sign should be, how many we need to order and where they need to go. I do believe it's much needed and she's referencing, we do have some children with disabilities in the community. And we would like to post some signs by where they live to let people know that in this area there is a child or someone with a disability, not just a child, it could be an adult. Um that this person has a disability in this area. So um I do believe that's a good program and I'd like to see that get off the ground.
Okay.
Alright, so just make sure we put this back on the agenda when you have all your um information for, for the program.
I have my homework.
Okay. Alright, back to school night, back to, back to school movie night, Councilwoman St. John?
Yep, so pretty much already shared the flyer information on that. Mr. Cradle, if it's okay, I'm gonna send you just an email with the layout that we need for the tables and chairs. Um I went through that through work session, but I left it on here so I wouldn't forget to tell you. So we're gonna do thirty chairs um and we just need uh three tables out, but I'll, I'll send it to you in email as well. But that's it for that. Again, back to school movie night. Um something we're gonna try to do at least quarterly um and it is gonna be taking place Friday, October twenty-fourth from five to eight P M.
Thank you, Councilwoman St. John. Uh property owner site agreement, that is here, Ms. Rumi. But we're gonna need to revise the resolution that goes with this.
Right, yeah.
Uh we've already discussed that, so um I did get the consensus from the council that I could sign this document. It's just a, I guess, the selection of the artist?
The, the M O U. More than selection of the artist, but it allows us to use lot eighteen uh for the park, for the park. I think it's, I think it states that in there.
Alright, and this has officially been a re, review by our, our attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I think I put that in the resolution was sufficiently reviewed and the day he did that.
And then we can read this into record at our next meeting. Yes, Ms. Walker?
So that gives us the right to use that space, but does that give us the ownership of that? Cause my understanding that they're gonna turn that over to us.
I think I talked about convey, where is it gonna convey the ownership? Did, did I say that?
I don't know, so let's, let's, let's look at it because my concern is that those two lots, now that they're gonna turn, if they're turning them back over to the town, then we need to have a deed that says that it's town property. Because we're gonna be responsible for it, but certainly we don't want to just be able to use it if it's going to be our space that we're responsible for. So let's just make sure that we end up with the deed to those, to those two spaces.
Alright, so let's review this before I sign it.
Right.
Okay, alright. Six eleven sixtieth place, uh that homeowner has submitted a variance request for building an additional to her property. That letter has since been signed and sent back to the county. Um so that issue has um been resolved. Council reports, we mentioned in our pre-work session, the work session that going forward, the council will put their reports in writing much like you saw what I put up on the screen and then those will become public record and be put online um starting effective next month. If you do not have a report to submit, I know we didn't discuss this, but I would like the council's input. Should you be able to present if you don't have a written report?
If you have a written report. Well, so, so, so let me correct that, I'm sorry.
I didn't ask that question, but we can, we can hash that out at work session again. But um effective next month, our reports will be in writing for people to go and review them online.
Right.
Relative report.
Relevant reports, exactly. Thank you, Councilwoman Waiters. Two oh seven four three coalition, I think you covered that, Councilwoman St. John?
Um so only thing that I have to add for that is that um on October the twenty-ninth, um this will be a chance for uh pretty much coffee, community, conversation. Um this is where the two oh seven four three coalition meets with the Blue Line Quarter. Um there will be a full, not just limited to Seat Pleasant, Capitol Heights or Fama Heights. Um but we'll have elected officials there. Um anybody, stakeholders, businesses will all be at this meeting um to come and discuss the Blue Line Quarter and I do officially have um the location.
Or two oh seven four three?
No, Blue Line Quarter, which each municipality will have a representative um for that. So this is going to be October the twenty-ninth from nine uh A M to eleven. Um but I wasn't one hundred percent uh sure on the location yesterday, so I did get that confirmed. It's gonna be at the Training uh Source, which is fifty-nine Yost Place. Um for those who aren't familiar with that, right in Seat Pleasant, Maryland. Um so again, it's Wednesday, October twenty-ninth from nine to eleven. Um so basically it's celebrating the full out-launch of the Blue Line Corridor. Um and you'll be able to come, uh advocate, hear the projects that are coming, the businesses, places that are coming to the town um and be able to have your voice heard. Um and then again, we'll have each municipality um being able to be represented to have our own seat on that floor to give input as well.
And county officials be there?
Yes, um so, so far I know Jazz is supposed to be there, Crystal Arioda, Arioda, if I'm saying her name correctly. I'm not sure if Shayla's gonna be in attendance. I know they actually not be to come, not sure of everyone else, but I know the invite has been sent, but those were a few that uh they had confirmed for.
Thank you.
And that's all I had on that.
Thank you. Uh Veterans Day, I think Councilman Oscar kinda already briefly discussed it. But it had your name by, Ms. Walker, you had already mentioned that you wanted to do something.
Yeah, I just mentioned that I thought maybe this year versus just laying the wreath, that you all could consider doing something to bring the veterans in. I would recommend, Councilman Oscar, that you, Miss Russell, to get a flyer on the website or T.V., however you want to do it, so that we need to probably have some way for people to at least notify us that they're coming so you have an idea how much to purchase. But however you want to, you know, if you want to do that, that's just my suggestion that we figure that piece out and then figure out if you want to do it in the morning or midday, so you know what you're, what we're purchasing. Ms. Russell, I won't put it all on you, but I can help you with ordering whatever we decide to, whatever you all decide you want to order. If it's gonna be breakfast, lunch, or however you all want to do it, then.
I just want to remind the council that I did ask that we do a forty-five to ninety-day window prior, you know, events that we plan forty-five to ninety days out. I don't like last-minute stuff, so can we make sure when we doing events that we are planning accordingly, okay?
And that's my point. I just kind of made a suggestion because I was thinking about it. It's not really on me, but Councilman Oscar, it's up to you, however you want to do it, but.
So I just want to point out and remind, just because again, we are short of time, so you weren't on the meeting yesterday, so Oscar is gonna be out, but I don't want to, I want you to say, I don't know what your dates are, but he's gonna be out during that actual time, so some stuff will need to be planned in advance. But again, just want to make sure we don't realize that.
Okay, y'all can discuss that offline. Y'all can discuss that.
We'll be out of town.
Yeah. You can discuss it offline. Alright, and so we don't have anything on the new business, now we're opening up to public comment. If you would like to make a comment, you can come up here, state your name and what city and state you live in. Come on, don't be shy. I know y'all came to talk. Come on.
I can have a comment about the old Fama Heights Elementary School.
Yes, ma'am. Can you state your name and where?
My name is... I live on Sheriff Road.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
And I was wondering, was y'all gonna make that into a rec for the children that go in and play basketball during the winter months? Someplace to go, because they don't have anywhere to go.
I believe it's not large enough for a recreational center, and Ucap has already purchased that property. Mr. Rumi can give some feedback on what that property is slated to be?
Yeah, Ucap United Communities Against Poverty purchased, and their home office is gonna be there. So, also, it's a historic site, so the changing of the exterior is limited. They can do anything they want on the interior, but the exterior, it has to be in compliance with the historic site. And Councilman Mayor, you had mentioned that with parking planning, that's one of the things that I wish they would do also when they get permits for historic building. Often, Mr. Pinkney has to go out and stop, do a stop work order because of the historic site.
Right.
So I'll send you a little blurb about that.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to know, because people have been asking me about those houses that were built.
And there's several homes, new ones? So that information is on our website?
There's nothing on pricing.
Let me tell you how the price. They are basically, they use the high definition of moderate income, okay? So the first, there may be a few market rates, and I haven't got, received from here the actual market rate, but for the most part, it'll be based on your income. So if you make, I'm gonna use something I can easily run off. If you make a hundred thousand dollars a year and you want to pay eighty percent of that, so, you know, your, your rent would be based on your eighty thousand dollars per year. I can talk to you offline and show you how they calculate and come up with the price. So far, they have a commitment.
One income or two?
Total household income. Yeah, the household income, not individual income. So, so I'm glad to talk to you about that offline, if you want to know more information about it. They have received over two hundred application reservations for those homes. The one thing, I think, I know you talked with, when Secretary Day was here, I think you talked to one of the architects about giving us some ideas in terms of some of the properties that we have in town as to how we can develop, duplicate that new housing project. And one of the things in my University of Maryland class, they're looking at, they're using us as a model. So they're looking at how, and it requires some change in land use as to how we can increase the number of units on some oversized lots. So we get more housing built in the town. So.
We have a lot of empty lots that are owned by people.
Yeah, for the most part, they're owned, they're individually owned, they're not owned by the town.
Like I have grandchildren, and they come over in the winter time, and they don't have any place to play, you know, basketball and no sports.
Well, we do have Seat Pleasant Rec, we do have Seat Heights Rec, that's just a few, you know, a mile away from Fama Heights. But we are looking at some future projects to try to bring, I guess, something to the town of Fama Heights for our youth. Just be on the lookout. It's not gonna be like in the next year or so, but it's gonna be down the line. And we are trying to develop this area a little bit more to be more youth-friendly.
I think we need something to keep us out of trouble somewhere.
You're exactly right. And we are trying to do that, so please make sure your grandkids and come to our events that we do, movie night, trunk-a-tree. Please make sure they come, because we are trying to actively engage our youth in the community. Okay?
And have any ideas for other things they would like to see?
Yeah, if they got ideas, we're open to it.
Well, they don't live with them, but I keep them like at the evenings and on weekends.
Right.
And, you know, because I used to take them out to Latum and Urban Air and all these places, but I say, you know, that's costing money.
Right.
But I say, you know, I'm being tacky. I should have somewhere to go, you know.
Within your community, you're absolutely right. Yeah, so we got two events coming up. I want to see them here. I want to see you here too. We're gonna make sure you watched a good movie that day. Did you have any other comments, ma'am?
My daughter.
Hey. Alright, y'all together. Anybody else in here has any comments, public comment?
Oh, also, we got a letter telling about they're gonna put a bike lane on Sheriff Road.
Yes, ma'am, that is coming.
Do they have any, hi, my name is April Sanders, and I'm the president in Fama Heights Sheriff Road. But do they have any, like, designs on how it's gonna be looking as far as what they're gonna be doing on Sheriff Road, the renovations?
Yes, I can have Mr. Rumi research that for you, and we'll have that information for you. She can get your email address, and maybe we can email it to you or something like that. And then maybe she can report on it next month.
Okay.
So we're gonna go online for comments?
I was just gonna say, did you want to allow them to start? I'm using their mic first, or you want me to read?
Are there any comments online that you would like to say versus us reading, what's in the chat first? I guess it's safe to read the comments from the chat?
Okay, there are some questions, but this is for public comment. I'll be reading the comments, not necessarily answering any of the questions. I think some of these are old now. The flyer says three items for bulk trash. It seems five is more reasonable. This comment is coming because Mr. Cradle did state five, even though the flyer says three, but I think that was a change. We made it three last time because of the way that the truck, because of resources, right? So, is five is accurate?
Five is accurate. I just went for what it did.
Five, which is, which was five, yeah, always been five, so five is valid. The next comment, where is the location on Addison Road for the store? Okay, so this was going on while I was speaking. Will there be a mass mailer from the county to all residents in district?
Yes, in reference to?
That was to the Gooder Store.
She said that was gonna be to be determined. So once we get that information, we will post it on the website.
The town collects a fee equal to fifty percent of the county permit fee. Mr. Pinkney has also previously confirmed this thing. And then the next comment, was it confirmed that Meals on Wheels now service the town? Pre-COVID, they did not.
No, it's.
I said Meals on Wheels attended the event on Saturday. I said nothing else about it.
Okay, got this.
Yeah, they just attended the event, not servicing the town, but if you would like, you'd have to sign up for it, yes.
So we had a vendor slash partner that came from Meals on Wheels, and they shared information. What the gentleman was saying was how often they serve meals and some of the services that they do offer. So it's not that they're serving, and they may be serving people in the town of Fama Heights, but that's not the reason why they were at this particular event. They were there to share information. Any additional information that would be needed, I don't know whether I have a flyer here or not, but you'd have to contact them directly, wherever the question's coming from, contact them directly. But to reiterate, the town of Fama Heights has not entered into a partnership or anything like that with Meals on Wheels to distribute.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, and then Ms. Jacqueline would like to speak for instance, if we can unmute her mic.
Wait a minute, it's citizens' participation. I'll let you.
Okay. Regarding the fee and...
I'll let you, let me finish with citizens' participation, and I'll circle back. Ms. Morgan?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, barely, but we can.
Two weeks ago, my son got robbed on Sheriff Road. Going to the store, I'm not sure how late it was because he said I was asleep. But he spent two weeks off of work because they hurt his ribs. He had an arm in his sling, and then they hit him on the head or something, so it was three guys that jumped him. So please, be vigilant. And I told him, if he gotta go to the store to get a B.C. powder, he need to get in the car and drive to the store instead of walking on Sheriff Road. Because the Ebony Inn is hot every night on Sheriff Road. And the other thing, Fifty-Six and Co., I leave out like six-thirty in the morning, it's dark. The deers are running through the neighborhoods and all the other animals. And it's really dark trying to go up the hill of Fifty-Six and Co. Maybe some type of lighting there, not sure what you all could do, but park some red on your side, so. Maybe something to look into.
Alright, so the chief is taking notes as well as Mr. Cradle for public works. We will look into seeing how we can increase the lighting in that area.
Thank you.
What happened to your son?
Yes, I'm very sorry to hear about your son. Is he doing okay?
Yes, he just started back to work on Monday.
So it just hits home what the chief said, be vigilant when you outside at night, and in the daytime too, so.
Yes.
Mayor Stewart, can you ask Ms. Morgan, is there, is there a light pole at Fifty-Six and Co.? Because if there's, if it is, if she gives us the, the number on that pole, then we can notify Pepco. Is there a light pole there?
I, I just have Mr. Cradle go take a look.
There's not a light pole there.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, and again, sorry.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments online? Nothing else in the chat? Alright, Councilman Oscar, you had a question?
No, it was the fee that she, the person mentioned that the town is getting a percentage of the permit fees that they pay to the county, is that?
That was for permits. It's building permits.
Right, but we don't get a percentage of their fee.
No, we, we have our own.
Charge fifty percent. Whatever their fee is, then our fee is based on the county's fee for building permits.
And then, so if there's no other public comment, we'll go down under announcements. You want to do the announcement about the toy drive?
Yes, oh, sorry, we do have one more that just popped up. How's the town going about asking residents about their disabilities for purposes of the signs project?
We will develop a criteria, we'll start working on a criteria at our next pre-work session, and we'll get that information out as soon as we develop that criteria. Safe to say, Councilwoman Waite?
Yes, safe to say, and I wanted to make, because I noticed this too, conclusion, that's why I asked about resolution. Sometimes we do install and then people move, so I wanted to get, I think there's a standard sign and they want it applicable specific to a residence. So all that information has to be considered, as well as, again, I mentioned, our community outreach and input as well.
Yep, we will be reaching out for community input.
It's like, you know, you want to, you want to give people respect and privacy before the sake of having someplace inconvenienced to park and get in, in your access. But that way, making sure access is considering, some people, and I really, I've already explained to you all what my consideration is without sharing my neighbor's business, but.
Right, but if, if that resident says, no, I don't want it, then we.
Then we don't have to install.
Okay, alright, so be looking forward to, we'll, we'll provide guidelines on how we want to move forward with that program. Alright, under announcements, you got it?
Yep, so I don't know that we have the actual date of that to be determined, but we know that we have mentioned that we'll have the coat and toy donation coming up. I do know right now we are accepting donations. Donations will be accepted all the way up until December the thirteenth, but I'm not sure if we had an actual date for the event yet.
December thirteenth was the date.
December thirteenth is the, okay, so we will take donations all the way up until the actual date of the event, which is going to take place December the thirteenth. Do we have a time?
Three to six P.M.
From three to six P.M., alright. So that's our coat and toy drive. It'll be right here at the town hall from three P.M. to six P.M.
On December thirteenth?
On December thirteenth.
I want to remind the residents that we, we do have a food distribution first and second Sunday of every month. From one to two P.M., we distribute the food, we give out tickets at twelve-thirty. So if you're interested, and it's really good food, it comes from Trader Joe's, if you're interested, please come and get some of this good food.
Okay, and then also, so again, our trunk-a-tree is gonna be October thirty-first. If you're still looking for things and places to take your kids in other places, Capitol Heights Police will be presenting their trunk-a-tree October the thirtieth. So it's gonna be a Walk-A-Mile Square Shopping Center on Addison Road. That's fourteen hundred Addison Road, so that's that, that Thursday, I believe, Wednesday, yeah, October thirty, thirtieth is Thursday, from six to eight P.M. And then in addition to that, we have the Make It Stop in Human Trafficking event, sponsored by council member-at-large, Jolene and Ivy, and that is going to be taking place on October seventeenth, which is in two days, from ten A.M. to twelve P.M. at the Wayne K. Curry Administrative Building on the third floor. And those are all the ones that we have for now.
Alright, so if we don't have any other announcements, I will accept the motion for a German. I'm over to adjourn this meeting. I'll take a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.